Let's call the May 15, 2025 meeting of the Planning Board to order. Let's stand up, do a little pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, the nation, my God, indivisible, and every justice and
Okay. I did win. There was no one to win against reelection. I had been sworn in. The first item on our proposed agenda is board elections and appointments. I would like to continue as Chair.
You're not supposed to self-promote yourself, you know.
Okay, well.
I already put the fix in. Bartlett was gonna nominate you. You just ruined everything.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize. I've been Chair for the -- I want to do a little campaigning. I've been Chair for the last year, and I think it took a little while to get on my feet. And I'm on my feet, and I'd like to continue for the next year. I think we have a good group. We have a lot of talent, both on the board and in the professional staff. And I hope we don't have some of the more weighty measures that we've had in the last two years. And we just had the more run-of-the-mill planning issues. But I think that we conducted ourselves well. And for example, with the last town meeting, though the marijuana bylaws did not pass, we did our job by putting it forward and giving the town the wherewithal to vote on it. So, anyway, that being said.
I nominate Daryl Baker, actually, for Chair. And so I would like to say that the nomination is based on the fact that Chair should trade out annually. And I also believe that he did a good job at our town meeting representing the Planning Board's work. And he has time. He's newly retired.
Wow, nice.
So.
Well, I would like to nominate Jeff Reed for Chair.
Okay, thank you.
I'll weigh in. Daryl's been here a year. If you want to be Vice Chair, I don't have a problem with that. There is a bit of a learning curve to it, I think, especially dealing with Maren all the time. Half the time, Maren calls us to say, well, how do you want to handle this? What do you want to do? I think Jeff did a great job, and if Jeff wants to do it again, I would support Jeff doing it again. And like I said, if you want to be Vice, I'll step away from Vice if that's what you'd like.
Well, reading the tea leaves, I don't think I'd be Chair after this discussion here today. So that would be probably a good alternative.
Stepping stone, how's that?
So let's dispose of the -- and to the comment about the every year. I think, in theory, that can work, but in the past, we haven't had a group of people who want it to be Chair. And what happens then? So I think, in theory, it probably is not good for someone to go on and on and on. But I think two consecutive terms is -- it's not out of bounds.
Takes a while to get your feet wet.
And I guess I would say that, given the situation is that you did have somebody, do have somebody, who's willing to run, that that's an option for the Board.
Okay, thank you. May I have a vote?
You nominated -- we'll start with Jeff. You nominated Jeff. I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor of me for Chairman, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Okay. So I will continue as Chair. Now, for Vice Chair, Mark has nominated Daryl. Do you accept that? Okay. All in favor of Daryl being Vice Chair? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
And Daryl will be Vice Chair. Now, Clerk Bartlett, do you want to continue as Clerk? I know it's a really onerous job.
It's totally gratuitous, but I'll make that sacrifice if I have to.
As long as we have to have a Clerk.
We still have the stamp.
Yeah. Okay, the next.
We have to vote it.
Okay. All in favor of Bartlett Harvey being Clerk? Please say aye.
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 Okay. We have several other -- the appointments to other committees has wound down somewhat. For a while there, we were -- I think, in general, the committee activity has wound down, as I understand it. I would like to continue to be the Rep. for the CPC. We also have Planning Board members on the Affordable Housing Trust. And as members of the Affordable Housing Trust, they're also in the CPC. And then we have the various regional planning entities. Maren, would you explain what those are?
So our Regional Planning Agency is MAPC. The Select Board appoints one MAPC member. The sub-region, which is the smaller group of 13 towns, that's the magic region. And there are two town appointments to that. The Select Board has one appointment, and the Planning Board has one appointment.
And in the past, have you been the?
The town's single rep to Magic.
And would you like to continue that?
No.
Okay.
Recommending.
What is the time commitment? Are they Zoom meetings? Are they in-person?
Mostly Zoom. Every once in a while, there will be an in-person activity or special meeting. So usually, two or three of those in a year. And then meetings every month, except over the summer.
Is anyone interested?
They're usually Tuesday mornings.
Okay. Do you have a death wish?
No, I think that's totally appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah. Good. Thank you for raising your hand. Is there an objection?
Should Maren be worried about? No, you're not after a job.
I mean, is anyone else?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Because there's another appointment to the more state. There was MAPC and Magic.
No, Magic is the smaller one. And then MAPC, the Select Board has that appointment.
Okay, good. Okay.
They've made those appointments.
Okay. Anything else?
Or?
Oh, let's wrap up the CPC. Is, I guess, well, let's ask, who is in? Do we have to officially vote on this?
I recommend you go ahead and take a vote.
Sure. Let's take a vote on myself being part of the CPC. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You can have it.
Okay. That takes care of our proposed -- the first item? Second item is Board Business, where Maren will talk about the letter of determination of compliance with Section 3A of the Zoning Act.
Just wanted to take a moment to celebrate all the town's work and successes. And we got the official letter from Housing and Livable Communities that the MBTA district is in compliance. So we have checked that box. We're in compliance. We moved from -- yeah, so we've moved into compliance. So that is completed, and take a moment to celebrate that.
Okay. Housing Choice application, you've made the -- you successfully made the application?
Yep. And we haven't heard back yet, but the application was completed in the middle of April. So we met the deadline for that application.
I want to -- well, I guess we can do that later. The annual town meeting. So there were several articles that were of interest to us. Article 12, which we weren't responsible for, but we were in support of, did not pass. I think we each can think of our own, you know, backseat quarterbacking about that. But I hope that that effort does not end. I don't think it will. The next was the several marijuana articles, which the main one to take the cultivation to zero did not pass. And as I said before, I think it was our job to bring it forward, and I think that that was an accomplishment.
We spent a lot of time and a lot of money on it. We brought it to the people, and for whatever reason, they decided not to.
It failed at the ballot also.
It did.
Yeah. So I don't think the town support to bring it there was. Well, the ballot, I was talking with Dan Corey, and she said the turnout was below.
But it wasn't even a majority.
I know, but I guess my point is, there was very little interest in this particular town election. But whatever. And I think that, and we should carry this forward, that all the air in the room will be sucked out by the Shaker Lane project at full-time meeting. So this is not the time to bring forward any initiatives, even if we had them planned. And then the stormwater, thank God, the stormwater passed.
Yeah, backing up a half a step, the second marijuana bylaw passed, the correction to odor control.
It was such an effective presentation, convincing them to do the clerical corrections.
Thank you for so pervasive, Daryl, for doing the town meeting duty. Do we have any comments on the April 3 minutes? Can we vote to accept them? May I have a motion to vote to accept them?
I'm not sure if we accept that.
Second motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So is it her accepted? Do we have any bills?
We do have a couple bills. Let's see. The final bill from Ennis Associates for the MBTA Communities' work. She had held back a few hours, and so we did have a brief discussion when it did pass.
She's probably going to be able to buy a vote after this.
Or a poll, anyway.
There you go.
I mean, after all the work she's had because of this.
To do it, right. And then the second one is a bill from Green International for stormwater review at the Russell Street Project.
Planning Board meeting schedule.
So if I can jump in, so we got our annual letter from the town accountant asking how the Board wants to handle signatures for bills and for payroll. So currently, for bills, you have a majority of the Planning Board members sign them. If you want to continue doing that, then you don't need to take any action. And then the second part is how you want to approve payroll. Right now, payroll goes to department heads and then to the payroll office without Planning Board review of each.
Does anyone have any opinion on changing the status quo? Not hearing any, let's just keep the letters.
See, that's what happens after one year. You get good at it.
Okay. Planning Board meeting scheduled. Yeah, no fun.
What email was that in? I can't find.
I couldn't find it either. But basically, the question is, do we vary? Do we need to vary from the first Thursday of each month going forward?
So, yeah, so what we have proposed was the -- we had this actually posted in the meeting packet. So June is -- right now, we have it, it's June 5. I understand there might be a question whether everybody's available for that date. And then the rest of the summer, we pick the first Thursday, except for November, when there's a town meeting the first week of November.
I had a lot going on this summer, but I'm avoiding all the first Thursdays, so I can commit at least through, you know, September. So I'm in favor of just keeping it the way it is.
And I would point out, except for July, where we're skipping the Fourth of July.
Okay.
Week.
Used to be the Third Thursday, now it's on the First Thursday. Does it really matter? As long as it's consistent.
So what Cooper's done is set deadlines for when new material needs to come in for a meeting, and he posts that online.
Anyone else have -- has other?
Right now, my calendar looks pretty compatible with that, so.
Anna, do you have any?
No changes.
I think I'm okay on that.
Okay. Okay, so we'll allow this schedule.
Okay, thank you. And then, while we're at it, the June meeting, you were questionable on the Fifth?
It wasn't.
No, I think it's fine.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a whole summer of 90th birthday parties coast to coast.
How many times can you turn 90 in one year?
Several, several different people. Okay, so.
So before we move on, while we're on this meeting schedule and stuff, the one thing that I find difficult is the mix of things that are in the PDF, the links there versus links that are on the website. And I guess I prefer if the agenda that we came out with had all of the links for the information for the meeting, so I didn't have to try to figure out which site to go to in order to look for information. So that when we send out the thing here, even if you just copied and pasted all the links from the Planning Board page into the appropriate pieces here. But even like, just like I said, I was at a loss to find the meeting schedule. I don't know why I couldn't find that there, because it really, to me, it just wasn't in one spot to readily get. So I prefer if the agenda that we get there includes all of the links for all of the information for the meeting there. If we could consider that as a change to how we prepare the information packet for us.
I agree, because it's, we have to go to two different places and pretend that we're all little babies that have to be fed. And I have no problem with, you know, thinking of myself that way with this type of thing. So, anyway, practically speaking, is there any problem with that?
So one of the purposes of the project pages is just, over time, as things come in for each meeting, we'll add those near the top of the page, and you can go down and review things that were before. So as an extension, would you be just looking for the -- any new materials?
Yeah, the material for the meeting. I mean, the history and stuff, I can go look that up. But like, if there's a letter that says that we're, you know, from one of the, from one of the other boards, it would be nice if it was just linked directly out of the packet here, rather than, you know. I think it's probably, if you just took the current section of the Planning Board project thing there and just pasted that into the agenda, and just keep, you know, and then you send us the agenda, we'd automatically have all of the current links.
So the agenda would have the project page as a link?
No, not the project. Well, the project page could be linked, but I think the material pertinent to this meeting should be in the clickable from the agenda that we get.
Yeah, because in the old days, Maren, you used to list the link of what we were looking at, even though it was like three months later, so we could look at it that way.
Right.
So if you want to continue to do that, but like Daryl says, all the new stuff is there that's just come in, like if we got a report from the Fire Department or something, put that in. If we want to look at the history, we have to go back to the link.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe you do it on the date of the, you know, whatever's been submitted since the last meeting.
And maybe just looking at the format there. Well, again, you have a couple of different formats, because you also have a link to a cover page, which has different information than sometimes there. So I'm just looking to try to get it, you know.
Uniform.
Uniform. So even if this format here, you know, if on the cover page, the cover page had all of the links for it, it's just so that it's like, just readily, you know, readily accessible.
That's a thought, to do it on the cover page.
Because that has all the information that we're supposed to need.
That is duplicating work, so.
Well, not doing it on this, because this is more or less a public document.
This is, yeah, what goes to the town clerk's office.
Exactly. Not doing it on this, but the cover page is something for us, and maybe that would then.
Yeah, that would have the summary of everything for the meeting.
Okay, so, and in this example, you, rather than the link to the project page, you'd like?
Have the material that we need to review.
New documents right there.
Yeah.
We could give that a try, see if that works for you.
And if it's on a resit zone or, you know.
I think that will also be easier for any residents who are looking at the documents.
You can give that a try.
Well, now that you're out there, it's time, since you're not doing Magic meetings anymore.
Okay. Member update on projects. The big update was the groundbreaking last week for 550 King. Did anyone, was anyone able to attend?
Yeah, I attended.
And were you just wowed and overwhelmed and?
Well, we didn't get to sit up on the stage with all the bigwigs. But fortunately, we didn't have to give a speech either, so I guess that was the.
Little sandwiches.
Okay.
No, it was nice.
You mean, there weren't slices of pizza?
There was.
Oh, okay.
No, it was, I thought the, it was very nice. I mean, every, you know, the support from the congressional and representative pieces was pretty impressive for them all to come. And quite frankly, I think Sal did an excellent job presenting the, sort of, the project and where he wants to go with it, so.
I missed it, too.
It's okay, we were taking names.
Well, since it was scheduled five days before, I think it's, yeah.
And rescheduled three times during.
Mr. Chair, I think one of the things that would be helpful is that, from the photos that I could see, it looks like there were new ones that this Board hasn't seen before.
Oh, in terms of the renderings?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think it would be good, especially since they haven't been before us, to show us whatever the renderings.
I've noticed there was a rendering that was out and about that was clearly out of date. I mean, I think there's a combination of out of date and new that hasn't been seen. Do we have a liaison with their, what's the fellow's name, the development guy?
Rick?
Not Rick. No, Rick is, I think, is sort of, they have a development, Steve?
So Morgan Pearson is the real estate rep for the public developer.
Well, anyway, can we reach out and see? They have told us that they're going vertical, you know, in the fall. Well, you know.
Is that what they said at the meeting?
They've said that in the last, yeah, the last time they were before us, in the last couple of months, it was vague, with the same type of thing as before, you know, the actual construction started.
Yep, so they are holding every other week video conference with several of the departments, Police, DPW, Light and Water, just, you know, provide a quick update on the work that's being done on-site and coordinate any assistance that they need from the town.
Can you be included in that? Are you a Cooper?
Yes, we are.
Are you? You are? Okay. And so maybe we ask, you know, we'll ask you to report at the next meeting what, you know.
The update today is they're working on drainage.
So exciting.
Yes.
Okay, anything, Northern Bank is being built. It's the weirdest construction sequence I've ever seen. They have do this, then they go away, then they do a little more, and, but whatever. And.
It's watertight.
Yeah. Well, no, they're doing all the banking stuff, the safes and all that stuff.
Oh, they are?
Oh, yeah. They've been there for a couple weeks.
Oh, wow.
The 12 Robinson, three of the four units have been sold and are occupied. What else is there?
So the one I added back on that had been quiet for a while was the 254, 256, and 260 Air Road. That's the intersection of Air Road and Willow Street, the service station that there, that's there, that's going to be redeveloped into Energy North.
Right.
So their permits are still valid, given, well, given where we are in time, but they have been extended for another two years with the state law that passed in, what, August? The Leeds Extension Act. So I had reached out to the team and, you know, asked them, you know, what they're.
I was driving by there today, thinking, hmm.
Well, at least the state got down there.
Yeah, the roadstone, yeah.
Right, and so they are still, they are doing some investigations on-site. They do still plan on moving forward. And then they provided a letter, their understanding of the state extensions. And we certainly, they've done a good job of explaining the extension. No action is needed on the part of the town or on the part of the applicant.
To our audience, several of the agenda items have been withdrawn or will be continued. What are you here for?
The Catallos.
That is withdrawn.
Ah, okay.
Postponed.
And, yeah, it's, well, they're, whatever. So I want to tell you now, so you can.
You don't have to stay.
You don't have to stay, because it was.
Okay.
And there.
Will it be like at another time, another meeting then, or?
There will be another meeting on that property, but there's nothing scheduled.
It's not scheduled.
No.
So does this mean this is still in the works, or is this being?
Well, it's definitely in the works that he will be selling that property.
Okay. Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
I just wanted to give you the consideration of.
Rather than sit here and listen to us do nothing.
Yeah. Okay. Any other input from anyone?
Well, as it relates to this, if 245 Foster Street is, nothing's going on there, or 95 Taylor Street, should we continue to have them on here?
Probably not. There's nothing going on there. The only thing they're doing at 245 is they're putting the sidewalks in and everything, but that has nothing to do with 245 Foster, I guess.
So Strawberry Farms is being built or marketed, so.
Yep. Are you here for Catallos?
No. I'm here for 64 Beaverbrook.
That is being continued. The hearing will be open and continued pending their Conservation Commission work.
Okay.
So you don't have to, I want to tell you now, so you don't have to stay until.
Right, but that one, we do have a continuation date of June 5.
Okay. So take note of that, because once it's opened, there won't necessarily be news. There won't be a, like, a newspaper advertisement.
I thought there was for this.
So I got this as in a butter.
As in a butter. So why don't you take a note and say the next, the hearing will continue to June, the June 5 meeting? And then look at the little, the Planning Board page to see the time.
Okay. Or call the office.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're welcome to stay, but you don't have to.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's fascinating.
I'm not sure it's fascinating.
It's great.
It's been encouraging.
There are people behind the curtain.
So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, is it 650? Yes. 31 Chatter Street, as I understand it, we do not have the engineered plot plan.
Correct.
Okay, so we will not.
And hopefully, I won't put it on again until we actually.
We actually have.
When do they actually open? When do they actually, um, open? Isn't it soon?
Um, yeah, yes. The grand opening is tomorrow.
Oh, wow.
Senior Center tomorrow afternoon, one o'clock.
Little cake and ice cream dessert?
Everybody's invited.
Probably not. Cool.
Um, one hundred Taylor Street, uh, we have a revised site plan with several little, um, alterations. Um, can we put that on the screen?
Mm-hmm.
And it, uh, it should be time to, um, endorse that.
So we are past the days of getting a Mylar with a signature block and everything.
Okay.
Um, so what we did was just printed out the, the small version. Um, I don't know that it's necessary for you to sign it. Just, I would, uh, ask either, either sign it or vote to, um, say this is, this is the final plan.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? Daryl, one of the, the alterations was the driveway that you had requested.
And the square footage of the addition.
And the square footage of the addition is, is noted. So can I have a motion to endorse this? Are we calling the site plan amended?
Sure.
Uh, for.
I'll make the motion. For one hundred Taylor Street, the site, the site plan has amended.
Um, is, can I, your second?
Second.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Uh, so, uh, let's go to the next agenda item. Uh, six to the hearing for, are you hearing for sixty-four Beaverbrook Road?
No.
Oh, okay. Are you here for Cataldo? No. Okay. Cause those are two items that are being.
Continued.
Continued. So if you were there for them, that would allow you to leave. Um, all right, you would want to leave. So, um, the, the Beaverbrook Road, uh, property requires, um, Conservation Commission, input, which they are taking. So, uh, by the time they get back to us, uh, well, we will open the hearing, correct? And, uh, so can I, let's open the hearing first. Um, can we read out the, um?
Yeah. Um, Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five at seven ten P M. In room one oh three of the Shattuck Street Town Offices at thirty-seven Shattuck Street to consider a stormwater management permit under chapter thirty-eight, article two, stormwater management and erosion control of the code of Littleton. The property sixty-four Beaverbrook Road, map R nineteen, parcel eighteen. Owner applicant, Michael and Hannah Gruer, engineer, Dillison Roy, Civil Design Group, Inc. Application can be viewed online at the planning board page of the town website, littletonma.org or at the planning board and the town clerk's office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed work should provide written comment to the planning board office to my email address by May twelfth, if possible, or attend the public hearing. Please feel free to call the planning board office with the number or email with any questions. Signed, Daryl K Baker, Clerk.
So can we have a time for the June fifth meeting for the agenda?
Um, yep. Um, so I would recommend we do this early, um, at like six forty-five.
Fine.
Now, you know, they have to go to town of Westford for planning board approval as well, right?
Yes.
We're just doing our.
I know, but we have to send them there.
They, they're already, they have filed.
It, it did confuse me when I was looking at the abutting property, uh, map and saw this little parcel and it was supposed to be ten acres. And then I realized what was going on. Okay.
They have the fun of permitting in both Littleton and Westford.
Yeah. Uh, so let's compete to see, do we want to be more onerous than Westford or less onerous than Westford? So let's, um, have a motion to continue the hearing to six forty-five on June fifth. So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Next, um, Harwood Avenue, lots one and two, stormwater permit and scenic road review, joint hearing with tree warden. So we will open this hearing as well. Oh, seven thirty. Hmm.
Are you the tree warden?
No, no, I'm, I'm here to just observe that here.
So just so we know, um, the next two agenda items, uh, the Cataldo property has been withdrawn and the A N R for Nagog Hill Orchard is not ready also, as I understand it.
And we're a little early for this.
I see that. Yeah. Wow.
Uh, tree warden, Steve Whitten is actually.
Sure. No.
Yeah, that was ten minutes ago.
Please identify yourself. Well, he can go for twenty-four minutes and then just fill the time until seven thirty.
Mark Hamacher, Hartwell Avenue, also on the select board. Um, I had two things I wanted to mention. Um, the Northern Bank Development, I know you guys put in, um, a lot of crosswalks. Uh, we're asking this, they were in a process of asking the state to put in the beacons of the different crosswalks. So, um, help identifying where there was, are, and, um, help in additioning the state would be helpful. We're in the process of getting three on, um, in the, in the works right now on King Street. One at Ponside, one at Castle in the Trees and another one potentially Baldwin Hill. Those are all in the works. Um, my other quest, request from being on this, from the select board is to appoint someone to write an article for the town newsletter every month. To help keep the residents informed. Um, it's, it's a bit of a pain to do, um, having spent the past year doing it. But it's very important to do to keep people informed. So I suggest you appoint someone and make them responsible for doing it. So, thank you.
Thank you. I, thank you for the comment. And, uh, since someone in my neighborhood was hit by a truck at the Castle in the Trees, someone from one of the reps, state reps called Laura and said, we're getting, we're getting you three, uh, you know, beacon things, which is great. What's the pro- process for that? Does the state pay for it or?
On the state roads, the state installs that, yes.
Okay.
But it's a long process. We petitioned for those over a year, year and a half ago, so.
Okay. I mean, I noticed the one that went up on, uh, Newtown Road and I think it was part of the Newtown Road repaving. But, you know, that shouldn't have been a priority for those beacons. And I was, anyway, so that's good. I don't know. Um, I know that the Northern Bank people were going through the state approval. Did that include crosswalks or?
Yes.
Oh, thank God. Now, the next thing is, uh, just in terms of input, um, what's, we were told that repaving was supposed to start in April.
We were too.
Okay. And they haven't started the, the, the trenching at the. Whatever. Yeah.
Yeah. My understanding was that they were waiting for a mass doc, action on when they could start.
Because of course, that's the question. Some, someone who had been a local resident and is now living out of state was back and was saying, what is wrong with Littleton and its roads? You know, why can't you do something? Going, uh, it's, you know, it's on the way. Um, anyway. Any, since we have at least fifteen minutes to kill, um, any other topics, comments? Not necessarily related.
When I was putting together the, um, email that I sent around about the housing choice application, uh, it was good to go back and reflect on, you know, what programs, um, that Littleton has been eligible for by being a housing choice community and getting that extra points on various types of grant applications. But then I put in bold those ones that we had actually received funds through and it was, I, I was impressed with the list.
Could we make that as our newsletter contribution?
Um, sure.
For next month, since you've already done the work?
Happy to.
Yeah.
One thing, I know, um, Fall Town Meeting is, priority is, is the, um, school, but we have, I believe the state's published the draft A N R, um, reg, uh, bylaw. We probably need to.
A D U.
A D U.
Yeah.
Um, I don't even know what I said.
Acronyms.
Yeah. The A D U bylaw that, uh, we probably ought to, uh, try to get that cleaned up and prepared so that we can adopt the, uh, the updated regulations.
I, I think we had decided to put that off until s- next spring, um, because there are a lot of related issues having to do with, um, well, we do have some choices with, you know, they're, they're requiring us to accept A D U's, but there are some choices we have. And, uh, there's also the short-term rental thing and blah, blah, blah. So, um.
Well, the biggest thing is going to be septic. That's going to be the determining factor. So.
Yeah.
It's not as.
Well, it's not as critical. Now, I, I, I happen to have a project that in Newton that was developed with an A D U and the developer was extremely excited about it. And he is saying that he may have made a mistake, that people are not responding to having an A D U in their expensive home. Um, and they just sort of like, well, why are there two kitchens? You know, or why, you know, that, that type of thing. So anyway, I, it, it remains to be seen, you know, how it's going to be adopted. But maybe we could keep track of any applications that come in through the building.
Oh, absolutely.
That, I, I feel the main issue is that it effectively zones two families everywhere. Because these A D U's can be condoed. I mean, there's, that's condo is just a form of ownership. And it depends on how they're, you know, physically laid out. But, um, it's a pretty significant, um, change, but as Mark pointed out, in our community, because we have septic, it's, there's more restraint on it. But, um, I think there's kind of, their goal is to create housing, their goal is to create modest housing. And, um, it's a lot of a goal. I just, I don't know what it means for us.
I guess my, my point would be is, is, um, the state's drafted the, uh, model bylaw, which I think, I took a look through it, the, the issues, you know, the, really the only optional issue that they talk about is whether you're going to allow short-term rentals or not, and that the rest of it is all pretty defined.
Well, but you can.
So I don't really, my concern is, is by us having our existing one, which is not in direct compliance with the new law, it leaves a level of ambiguity and, you know, potential, uh, conflict in terms of interpretation.
Well, you do have discretion on square footage. You can't go under nine hundred, but you can, you know, create a different ceiling or something like that. Um, why don't we start a project page and post the draft bylaw?
Yep, already done.
Already done? Okay.
Yep. And, um, have been, had several conversations, um, with, uh, building commissioner as the zoning enforcement. He's the one that would both get any application, receive any applications, um, plus, um, advising, uh, residents on how, how to proceed. So he's, he's all over that already. Um, I can imagine that at Spring Town Meeting, we'll have the opportunity to, um, inform the two hundred to four hundred residents that are there, you know, what A D U's are, make a recommendation and have it pass, um, by more than the, um, simple majority need, that's needed. However, um, Fall Town Meeting will likely be several hundred, if not a thousand, um, residents who don't pay attention to zoning. And so having to, um, if, teach that many more residents about what it is that we're trying to do would be that much more difficult.
I mean, we should, we, you know, we would, of course, have public, you know, have a public hearing and.
Mm-hmm.
What is, Mark, what is the select board's strategy for the Fall Town Meeting in, uh, Shaker Lane? Are you sort of clearing the decks or?
We're not putting concrete. I don't think this is necessary.
I don't think it is either, but it is somewhat, it is tedious. Well, but it's also a, a break from a sort of longstanding, single-family home tradition. And we do have an accessory, we've always had an accessory bylaw. Um.
And, um, what we're, what staff is doing right now is, um, M A P C is working with Littleton and two other communities on, um, recommendations on how to get through the process. So we have several months with them.
Okay.
Starting, uh, I think next week is our, our next meeting with them. And they're using Littleton as a guinea pig on, on some recommendations to make.
So should we, why don't we, can we somehow, um, institutionalize that in our agenda as we go forward and sort of submerge it through the process?
Mm-hmm. Absolutely.
You know, come back to it. Let's all familiarize ourselves with it. Because Daryl and I went to a seminar on it and they, at that point, they didn't have the draft bylaws.
Right. And I think it would be good to wait a little while to see how this condo question falls out.
Okay.
Because that is one of the questions that's not, um, sometimes, some of the thought process is if you do condo it, then you don't, may not have a primary use and a secondary use. You might have two primary uses, which means it's not by right.
Which is the two-family thing, which is sort of implied in what we, you know. I, I was really interested in this, uh, presentation, which was on the state, which was the state, uh, employee, the state people who were, were they doing the bylaw? They were doing the bylaw.
Yeah.
And, but they emphasized that like everything in real estate, these are, um, the legal system will shape this going forward. In other words, just like the accretion of real estate law that, you know, governs pretty much everything we do is, is, you know, happens over time and this will definitely happen in this case.
Right. As, as the A G's office is ruling on those communities that are adopting it early, we can see what's passing and what's not passing.
So if you want to touch, say that you want to, that we want to codify the process that we want to go through is to track the, um, between the meetings and the evolution on the other pieces there, I can accept that. Uh, I can't accept that because there's going to be a thousand people possibly at Fall Town Meeting, we don't want to talk about it then. Because we always complain that not enough people are showing up at town meeting to vote on these articles. So I need that part kind of withdrawn from your argument.
I, I'm not going to withdraw. I, I don't think that it's appropriate.
Encouraging town participation, cause that's what the form of government that we have.
I see your point. I.
You can't, you can't say there's going to be a thousand people there, so we don't want to bring up this and, and explain to everybody.
No, I think that, that may have been, I, the way I interpreted that comment was everyone will be preoccupied with this particular issue and it will take up a lot of time. It may go to another day.
Well, we do this then first.
Never works that way. It never works.
But anyway.
I, I don't see the, I just don't see the hurry. But, you know, we have professional guidance from the planning agencies.
I want to put on a schedule of what, when we're planning on doing it, then that's, I guess.
Okay.
I don't, you know, cause it's not on our agenda. So I want it, if it's, we're targeting for Spring Town Meeting.
Yeah.
Pending these other discussions and shaping it over the course of the next several months, that's planned.
Yes.
That's fine, uh, there. Okay.
And in our experience, if we have a good draft by January, we're a good, good spot for spring.
Go forward. But, and, and of course, we would have a, you know, hearing or hearings. Um, and.
Yep. And consultations with building department and with zoning board of appeals.
Hopefully that would be our. And hopefully, that would be our big planning board.
Issue for.
Issue for the year, in addition to all the, you know, the applications that are made, but we'll see. Okay, five more minutes, guys. Anything else?
Dean Lane?
Dean Lane?
Counsel.
Yep, so Dean Lane did transfer.
Nice. A lot of time has been spent.
Is it a habitat, is it?
Yeah.
Great.
Are you here for Cataldo's or, I know you're not. Anybody here for Cataldo's or, what's the other one?
64 Beaver Road.
Those have been continued. Nope.
So basically, the item scheduled for 7:30 is Harwood Avenue Lots 122.
That's it.
Okay.
Five people for that? Wow. You should charge admission. Can we start early?
I don't, well, Maren, I've come to understand that it's not.
She's such a.
Since we're, since it's an advertised public hearing, we're opening the hearing, maybe you can read the verbiage?
Slow.
Yeah. Read it with your eyes closed and guess the words.
So, public hearing, stormwater management permit, scenic road review, Harwood Avenue. The Littleton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday, May 15th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in room 103 of the Shattuck Street Town Offices at 37 Shattuck Street to consider a stormwater management permit application under Chapter 38, Article 2, Stormwater Management and Ocean Control of the Code of Littleton, and a scenic road review under Chapter 143, Scenic Roads of the Code of Littleton. Property is Harwood Avenue, lots 1 and 2, map R07 parcel 1. Owner applicant, Peter DeCarolus, DECA Corp., engineer, Goldsmith Preston Ringwall, Inc. Applicant is requesting approvals to develop two lots as single-family dwellings with associated driveways and utilities on Harwood Avenue. Application can be viewed online at the planning board page of the town website at littletonma.org or at the planning board and town clerk's office during their business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed work should provide written comment to the planning board office. My email address by May 12th, if possible, or attend the public hearing. Please feel free to call the planning board office, 978-540-2425, or email with any questions. Signed, Daryl K. Baker, Clerk. Let me get to the right project.
That clock's fast. The actual time, we have seven minutes.
Oh, I was going to say, I like this clock way better.
Maybe we go by this clock. You can have, yeah.
We only had 17 clocks in there that went on atomic time, whatever.
We had several continuations and withdrawals and whatever today.
So you've been waiting around for us all evening.
Yeah, we're just really excited.
We're here for you.
Well, it's been a little while since.
We're here for you, Bruce.
Well, you have a long history with this project.
With this land, yes, I do.
Maybe you can give us a little history, which isn't really part of the hearing, about how it was open space development and.
I'd rather not.
No, I was going to say, we don't want to.
I don't want to stick my foot anywhere, so I'd rather not.
Can we talk about, like, the disposition of the rest of the parcel? What's going on? No? You don't know?
Not my position.
Not here? Okay.
He knows as much as we know.
Yeah. It's hard to, hard to predict.
I can't help you with the rest of the project.
Okay. Well, we're just curious. We, you know, we've.
We can tell you that we're here to talk about two of the lots that were A and R.
Yes.
So there's five more A and R lots. Five or four?
Five.
Five, yeah. You don't know whether they're going to, anything with the rest of them, right? You have no idea.
Well, the A and R plan looked remarkably similar to a plan that I did for them some time ago that.
Like 2019? What was that?
They didn't want us talking about the site before 7:30.
Just one administrative thing. So in the thing here, it's Harwood Avenue Lots 1 and 2, but on the project page, it's 195 Tehadawann.
Yeah, we used the Healy Corner project page because it's the same site.
So you, you'll notice when you look at your, you count the road maps, we have Harwood and Tehadawann, and they have an overlapping stretch, and they have different names and different numbers depending upon where you are in that stretch. So it is rather confusing.
Yes, the assessor's office was, did confer with town clerk and planning on, you know, what, what addresses, addresses to use.
We can't have thought one side of the road should be Harwood and the other side should be Tehadawann.
Except that the one Tehadawann address, the old address is almost on the wrong, yeah, almost on the wrong side, if you look at it that way.
I believe Lot 3, the White House still has a Tehadawann address. So it's going to go Lot 1 and 2, Harwood, Lot 3, Tehadawann, the other lots, 4, 5, 6, they're going to be Harwood again.
Yeah.
That's weird.
Isn't it?
I think the.
The Lot 3 shouldn't.
The post office didn't want to change it.
They didn't want. That should be Harwood, right? The Lot 3?
Was that it?
Lot 3 should be Harwood, shouldn't it?
One would think so, but there's apparently some long family history there that we shall not get into, or should we go with it? Where is that?
They deemed Tehadawann was a better address than Harwood? Okay.
I, I don't know.
Yeah. We're almost there.
I asked about changing it when I started, and I got.
We need to appeal to the address police or something. We're almost there, guys. By this clock in the meeting room.
That's the official meeting room clock.
It shows that we're past our scheduled time for the hearing that Maren has already announced and talked about. So I'm going to ask the applicant and their representative to give us a presentation.
And also understand that tree warden, Steve Witten, is here.
Yes, okay.
Ready, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. Wow, that's loud. Good evening, Bruce Ringwall, Goldsmith Preston Ringwall, GPR, representing Peter DeCarolus, DECA Corporation, who is the owner of lots 1 and 2, AKA 303 and 305 Harwood Ave. We have submitted a scenic road application and a stormwater management application for the board to entertain. Lot 1 has three existing trees within the right-of-way, and, Maren, I don't know if you can zoom in on the Lot 1 driveway at all? Apparently not. Control roll won't. The other one's good, but it doesn't show, well, we'll go to that. At the entrance of the driveway, there are three existing trees of good size. There we go, here's some pictures. There's a Norway maple, a dead red maple, and a sugar maple that are within the road. They've been posted. I believe Steve's been out with Dave from my office and looked them over, and they've posted the trees. There's also a stone wall along this section. The stone wall is actually out of the right-of-way. I submitted a couple documents that Maren can bring up if she likes, if not, or if the board prefers. But basically, as you're aware, Harwood Ave was laid out as a county road, called Harwood Road at the time when it was laid out. And so it has an actual width, it's not just by walls and whatnot, and the right-of-way width is in front of the wall in this location. However, the applicant intends to do exactly what we do do when the road, the stone wall is part of the right-of-way or within the right-of-way and addressed as a scenic road, and has used the stones that we have to move for the driveway to enhance other sections of the wall. We also have another, there's a close-up of the trees. We also have a, another section of wall that runs quasi-perpendicular to Harwood Ave at the entrance of Lot 2, that he'll probably be using those stones to enhance the, the entry walls along the road as well. Fully on the property. Yep. All fully on the property.
Do you think they make them used until the turn, as the turnaround, so they turn into the property?
Yeah, or enhancing the wall. As you can see, some areas are missing stones. Along the frontage, there's actually a little space down towards the end of Lot 1, the beginning of Lot 2, where the wall isn't there because of the old driveway that goes in on the left-hand side of, not to be confused, but 195 Tehadawann Road. And that, that property has, as you know, several driveways to enter into it. So we will be enhancing the stone wall and cleaning the stone wall up in the process of moving forward with the, the building on the property and using these stones accordingly. Mr. Witten is here this evening, and he has proposed the replacement of these trees, but there is, as you can see from the photos, very limited space between the right-of-way and the stone wall itself, and has made suggestion that we plant on the opposite side of the wall, on the property side of the wall. And the applicant's in favor of that. We will be thinning out some of the trees and the vegetation on that side as part of what we have to do for drainage and also just to clean up the whole area, so it's a, an appropriate front yard to the property. I believe that Mr. DeCarolus and Mr. Witten have spoken relative to the number and size of trees, and I think we're with two to three maples at two to two and a half inch caliber. Trying to get a three and a half inch caliber tree these days is very, very difficult. That's been the proposal on that front. Maren, if you want to go back to the second sheet of the three-sheet set? So relative to the stormwater management and meeting the phosphorus removal requirements, we are picking up the bulk of the driveway on Lot 1 with a swale that flows down into a, nope, the other drive, the other lot, please. There you go, right about there, it all flows into this bio-retention garden on Lot 1 for detaining, but also mostly, in this case, phosphorus removal. And the entire roof of the new structure will be collected via manifolds of the downspouts and recharged in the drainage structures right there, their infiltration chambers that'll be put in, obviously underground. And both of these structures are set up to be removed several feet above, the bottom of them several feet above the existing groundwater, which is fairly high in the site, so it has some issues with that. Relative to Lot 2, very similar, the roof is being collected and recharged into a series of chambers that Maren is reviewing right there, or highlighting right there. And then the full driveway goes on down to just about the middle of the septic system on Lot 1, to a high point. And surface flow from Lot 1, as well as the flow from the driveway, gets picked up in a swale where her cursor is now, and flows to the south-southwest, all the way down to a forbay and then into a detention basin. And both of those structures basically are sitting on the surface of the ground grade. They will remove the top and sub, and we'll put in the proper material underneath. But this is again because to have the two-foot offset to groundwater and to recharge appropriately. And with the calculations, both on the plan and in the eight-and-a-half-by-11 package that was submitted, it shows the requirements for the amount of removal of area that needs to be dealt with for the water quality recharge, and the amount being provided for that in both those areas. And it's my understanding that this has all gone out to Green International, and no response is back as of this time, or it wasn't going to be available as of this time. Is that correct?
So there's two separate issues before us. It's the scenic road and the stormwater. Let's first open it up to the board about the scenic road issues.
I would point out that there is no stone wall and no trees in front of Lot 2, because that's where the, the second drive to 195 Tehadawann currently is.
I personally do not bemoan the removal of a Norway maple anywhere. Anyway.
As an invasive, we 100% agree.
Yes. I have no comments. Anyone else?
So my comment is just that I believe that unless the tree warden's recommendation is changed, that the applicant be asked to follow the recommendations of Warden Witten for the replacement of the trees.
Do you want to put that in the motion to, what, what exactly is the protocol for approving a scenic?
So recently, we've been issuing written decisions.
Okay.
For that. But yeah.
Well, we don't have a draft for a decision, but let's try to put it together so we can, you want to try, Anna?
Yeah, I, I think that I, as a motion.
Yeah.
So I, I would move that the board accept the recommendations of Warden Witten, especially with respect to the, the size of the caliper, so that it follow the caliper of three to three and a half inch recommendation.
I think just in terms of, I think when we did the other one, was that Strawberry or the one that we were talking about?
Strawberry Farm.
There, I think we just said that we want, the, the motion included inclusion of the tree warden's recommendations.
Yes.
As part of the approval.
Sounds good to me.
Bruce, I believe you said that, that three and a half caliber trees are basically not available?
Well, it's been my experience over the last several years that when you try to get a three and a half inch caliber tree, you basically have to order it a couple of years in advance, or you have to go to New Jersey and have it brought up from New Jersey or something. Of the three trees that we have in front of the property, one is dead, one's an invasive, and one's a nice sugar maple. So I called and had conversation with Mr. Witten, and he said that this was something that we could have some discussion with him about, certainly. And then I passed the baton to Mr. DeCarolus, who reviewed the Littleton tree selections and has had discussions, and I don't want to speak for anybody, so.
So.
Should Witten like to speak?
I was going to say, if we, probably let him speak, but his recommendation was two and a half to three inch, not three and a half plus, so I think he already taken.
Well, because we heard two to two and a half, and then three to three and a half.
We proposed two to two and a half.
Can we do two and a half to three?
It says no smaller than.
Okay. So I received the notification for the posting on 429, where I went in onsite and I took the pictures to look at the trees and posted the three trees. Just go right to it so that I have it correctly.
If you could clarify what, what your recommendation is, that would be great.
Because, yeah, your letter in the main text says that they could do two-and-a-half, two, two-and-a-half to three.
Yes.
And then you have something else later.
Yeah, so.
If you could clarify.
I will, yep. So on posting the trees on 429, you know, I identified the species, the one silver maple, which I identified as the left tree, if you're looking at them, the one red maple in the middle, and a Norway maple. The silver maple is approximately 12 inches for the caliper and a 10-inch and an 11-inch as it goes through. Under the guidelines, when we're looking at the replacement of trees, we have it that we were trying to get a three to three-and-a-half caliper recommendations from the shade tree committee, so that we're trying to replace trees because they are a 12-inch or 10-inch or nine-inch, that we were getting some full-body trees. With the wholesalers and the vendors now, it is getting more difficult to get those trees. So I looked at the three trees as whole, in a whole package. And the entire area as its aesthetics and for the, the vista of the road. So what I could recommend, because of the Norway maple being an invasive, that it is good to remove that and get that out of our ecosystem. The dead red maple would also be something that would come up on my list for removal in the future. It was then possibly going to be removed. That leaves us with the silver maple. That being of 12-inch caliper would be a recommendation of replacement of two trees. So the written recommendation that I came up with is that they do setbacks. So that they're looking at the stone wall, we're looking at the road, and we're looking at the scenic vista as it's kind of considered for a scenic road by law. That would give us three trees in replacement. Setback behind the stone wall, because I feel that as the development goes on, they're going to remove more of the trees on their property. This would allow them to provide more aesthetic view and a better scenic road as it develops in the future. So that's why the recommendation was listed out as three, two to two-and-a-half. But still considering that, you know, with shade tree committee and other bylaws for conservation and everything, we were looking at trying to get larger, more mature trees. We're hoping that this works in our favor as we move forward. And then we'll possibly have to be looking at the caliper because of the availability.
So let me ask a slightly different question here. So the stone wall is on the, not within the right-of-way.
Correct. Correct.
And the tree, what's the distance between the road and the right-of, and the, and the thing? Could you put really realistically, put trees in there anyway?
It's about three feet.
So you really couldn't put trees there, so you're going to have to put them in back of the stone wall?
That's why we were looking at a setback possibility here. And then by the agreement of placing and replying the stone wall, we'll have the aesthetic of the stone wall in front. And then you will have a small grass area or debris area for plow, snow storage during plowing and everything else, not invasive to any of the road traffic.
And then once it's set on the private property there, is there, how is that controlled that the homeowner doesn't cut it down?
So in that responsibility, that's possibly going to be ordinances or developments in the future. Some towns are looking at a larger area for scenic roads, taking into effect more than just the right-of-way because a scenic road in the design is the entire viewpoint of what you're driving down. In our original consideration for scenic roads, we were hoping to keep tree-lined streets, but on 16, 18-foot streets laid out. Most of your roads are 40-foot right-of-ways, but in your rural areas and some, you're limited down to 20-foot, 30-foot right-of-ways. Stone walls were always built as original property markers. So now a few areas are starting to consider to take on that aspect. As the town moves forward with the shade tree committee and conservation and hopefully with planning boards and opinions and your input, maybe that's something that we look at in the future. But right now with what we have in place, you know, we want to utilize those guidelines.
One more question. If we concede that the practical availability of the larger trees is non-existent, is there terms that we can have them warrant the trees for a couple more years to make sure that they fully establish? There, I think we require them for like a year or something, once, at least in my neighborhood, when they put the trees in, it was a year. Is there something given that would, in, in exchange for not having the fully developed six-inch trees or bigger trees that we'd want there? A longer, I'll just call it warranty period? I don't know if that's the right term or not.
No, absolutely, that could be, so the, it hasn't been placed on anybody at this time yet. But I'm sure if we feel that there's a need to work something out with the developers that, you know, we want to have the watering and the care of that tree for a year or two years placed in, that would be something that you guys would have to really think about and put into the motion or into the agreement with your developer. You know? Again, on private property, I can't state what any of the rules and regulations would be after the fact. I don't have anything else in place at the moment that could take a, you know, donations or an open account to fund trees in other locations, which is one of the things that we did on Taylor Street. You know, we set that because of the location and the area of land between the other properties, we didn't have any room to place shade trees or a street tree to reimburse what we were removing. But at this time, we, we are going to work out, you know, something with that, that property owner to replace it.
This question might be more procedural for the board. Is, is it feasible for us to put some type of easement or deed restriction on those trees that they're not to be cut down by the homeowner?
I don't think that's feasible. I don't know how that would. I, I will say in my experience, on my street, there, the shade tree committee placed two trees. And they were not in the right-of-way, they were beautifully placed. And they were probably, Rick Finley did it, two-and-a-half caliper. And my, my, I live on Robinson Road. So they, one of the, I would say, there is a possible advantage in the long run of a smaller caliper tree because they have the opportunity as a young tree to establish.
I'm not opposed to.
Yeah. But, but I would say one of them was cut down by the homeowner. How would you feel if you had a property that you were precluded from cutting down a tree?
Well, I, I think it depends on the circumstances. If it's part of the conditions as, as they're building the house, it's a pre, it's, it's already defined. The buyer already knows that that's a, an easement that's already been granted there versus us arbitrarily placing a tree after the, the homeowner's purchased the property. Those are two different scenarios there.
Well, it's really no different. If we do a development and we have trees that are going into development, people buy the houses, they can cut the trees down.
Well, but those trees that are placed are usually on the right-of-way.
They're, no, they're usually in their front yards. If you go down like Delaney Drive, there's a boatload of trees that are in people's front yards that were placed as part of the development of the roadway. The only difference with this is, it's not really the trees we're trying to protect, it's the stone walls. The trees are just there and as you can, there, two of them are dead and one of them's an invasive. So it's not like we're really, we're replacing them, trying to make it look as nice as we can. But it's really the stone walls that make, that give the road the character.
I don't think there's any quibble about the fact that the trees need to be removed. I think the quibble is with, based off the recommendation, what size are we okay with? And, and hold on, and if you're saying that the three to three-and-a-half size was based off of the tree committee?
Shade Tree Committee.
Shade Tree Committee. And so are you saying that by putting it in here, you support their recommendation as well?
So.
That's ultimately what I'm getting to, because you're a subject matter expert.
Oh, so why I included that is so that you would have an idea of where I get my determination. I don't just create and make up the sizes or anything. It is a group of residents and individuals who make the recommendations on the tree bylaws and going forward. And as I work with them, we try to do the best, even for the trees that I purchase, going in at the common or any of the roadway trees, I have to sometimes purchase a less caliper to get a better quality.
So in this particular case, given what the applicant said about the smaller caliper, are you okay with that?
Yes, I am okay with it.
So then I withdraw my, my motion because like I said, you're the subject matter expert, I'm going with what you're saying, so.
So getting back to the ownership of the tree, you're going to put it behind the stone wall, people are going to own it. You would hope they would take care of it, but I don't think you have the right to tell them they can't cut it down. They own the property, they have the right to cut it down, just like any subdivision we do where we have tree, front yard trees, every, what is it, every 20 feet we're supposed to have a tree or something like that? They have the right to cut it down.
However, I think what Mr. Witten said and relating to what Daryl is talking about, we can perhaps work toward enhancing the concept of a scenic road. And I know that I work in communities where they establish what's called a tree yard on every property. And within that yard, it's usually 10 feet, you know, perimeter. And within that yard, if you remove trees, you know, you have mitigation or you have review or the tree warden comes out or whatever. And the, these are more closer into Boston communities. But we could look at scenic, you know, scenic road bylaws and other.
The only reason I bring it up is, is because we can't place, logistically, we can't place it in the right-of-way. Which would, the homeowner cannot, like my trees along the street are in, actually in the right-of-way. They're not on my property there, so I can't go cut them down, right? Because I think the whole purpose of, because without something like that, this is moot. Because you could put in a six-inch one and then just come in with a chainsaw the next day and cut them down. Which defeats the whole purpose of what this tree warden hearing is to me.
I'm going back again, it's not really the trees that are the critical part of this, it's the stone wall.
I think it's a combination of the things.
Well, that's what makes it, there's a lot of, there's a lot of places where there are no trees. It's the stone, we're trying to preserve the ancient stone walls that run along the roadways to make it look like a scenic roadway. Yes, it's nice that there are trees there because little, people in Littleton like trees, okay, I get that. But the critical part of it is the stone wall, and I agree, we should do everything we could to, to, to. Put the tree, if we're going to put the trees in, let's try to save them, I get that part.
And, and I guess I bring it up also because the, the drainage base then that you're proposing is, is like, probably like right around where the trees are going to end up. You know, but in that, in that buffer space there on it. I would like to see us consider for the, you know, maybe it takes a modification of the bylaw or something or, but I bring it up because the developer's also represented here, is, is, is there some type of easement or something that preserves those trees so that the homeowners are notified that they're not, they're part of the scenic easement that went in for it?
I'm all in favor of putting it in as part of the decision, but.
No, this can't go in part of the decision. Easements are, it, it, we need further discussion of this.
I'm bringing it up because like I said, it, it, it just, it.
This won't be the first time we have this issue, yeah.
Right. And I think expand, you know, in the future, talking about expanding the concept of the scenic road is definitely appropriate. So at the matter of hand, at hand, I, I had one question. Are you supervising the placement of the trees or the developer or?
What I would probably request is that the design be set forward where they, you know, because they have the drainage issues and they have the other things, if they just put down on a plan where they would put them, it could be sent over to my office, I can look at it and it can be placed back onto the planning board, that it was approved, you know, by that design. That would be my recommendation.
So there would be some oversight of the placement of the trees?
Yeah, there can be.
Okay. So. And then we, okay. We need a motion to approve the removal of three trees on this, is it Lot One? Replacement of three trees with a, hopefully two-and-a-half to three-inch caliper design for which will be approved by Mr. Witten and/or the shade tree committee. And then such approval conveyed to the planning board.
You also need the rebuilding of the walls.
Yes, that, that takes care of the trees. And then the, the stone walls, no stone to be removed from the site to be used to augment the existing stone walls on the site. And I would like to get some linear feet of wall to be removed. Can we do that?
We got the, for the driveway you're talking about.
For the driveway?
Yeah.
I mean, is it?
Roughly 16 feet.
16 feet?
10, 12-foot wide driveway.
And, and we have?
Couple feet either side.
One 16-foot section and on Lot One, and then is there, the stone wall's not on Lot, so it's one 16-foot section on Lot One?
And remember, the stone wall, if you have it, do you have a problem with that?
No.
We don't have a problem with you putting that in, but it's not even the jurisdiction of this hearing.
Because it's your property.
Because it's on our property.
So we appreciate your cooperation.
Yeah, my, my intent was to, as Mark was saying earlier on, Lot Two, put a little, some curved walls on each side of that driveway. But some of the stones we're going to use of the, what the 16-foot section's going to be, but there's another wall, Bruce, that goes perpendicular.
Right.
That's well off the right-of-way, but there's a bunch of nice filled stones there, so.
Okay. Do we have enough verbiage?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Before we move to close the hearing, please remember to ask if there is any public input.
Oh, yes.
And in the motion that you were making there, I, I would suggest that the, we not do tree warden or shade tree committee, we just have one point of authority for approval for this. And I recommend it be the tree warden. Not sending it back to a committee.
I mean, you can liaise with.
Yeah, I mean, how he liaises is fine, but I don't think we should have multiple authorities in the motion.
Public, anyone in the public making comments? That being said, can we have a motion for our previous outline of a decision?
I'll make the motion and we approve it subject to what we've done in the past for our scenic roadways and the bullet points that we've all discussed about the caliper of the trees and the wall that's going to be replaced.
Well, I thought we still had the stormwater piece of it.
Well, that's separate.
That's separate.
That's a separate thing.
Okay.
And it's, can I have a second?
One second.
Hall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. So that's your approval for the scenic road. Now, Mr. Witten, you're standing before us, I want to compliment you on the work on the tree planting on the common. And thank you for your sort of bringing us up to speed on what the current way of thinking about scenic roads are. And we'll take that into consideration as we go forward. Thank you.
And I just have one recommendation for you is, in your letter, if you could just say in here that in discussions with the shade committee, this other stuff, and in that way it allows us to just incorporate your letter of recommendation directly into the, into the finding. the, into the finding.
Fine, okay. So yeah, we don't have too many of these come up.
No, thank God.
But it is interesting that you do have 28 roads listed on the scenic road. This is one that becomes tricky because of the right-of-way, that is very narrow, so we get that placed on. The shade tree committee is also working on a tree bylaw for the town, and they're putting that together to help with placement of setback trees, placements in the choosing of native species and trying to get the invasives eliminated from the area. So many groups in town are working together towards the same goal. So I thank you for your time and everything you need.
Stormwater. They don't have, we-
But we do not have peer reviews to, so we need a motion to continue. What do we want to do?
Do you want to do this before the other one? So-
Will you be ready for next month, Bruce, with the stormwater?
We're ready for some of it.
Well, I mean-
I know, but in terms of incorporating any peer review or whatever.
Not that it should be, it's too much up to be.
Okay.
So, yeah, we can.
Continue to June 5th?
June 5th at-
Do this one at 7:30?
6:40 or?
6:40?
Well, we did 6:40.
Do 6:45.
Okay, okay. Okay, yes.
Just one question, so when we have Green does the peer review there, will they look at whether there's any drainage issues from lots one and two into the existing lot that's not, that's at the bottom of this plan, but not on this plan?
That's the butter. Well, they're required to not have any-
But Green will take, make sure that that's addressed in the-
Well, Bruce, you speak to that.
You are-
You're talking about the property-
The one that's down here, right?
Yeah, no, we're in total communication with that property owner and we're-
And Green will look at that as part of the peer review, right? The technical, we deal with that. I'm just making sure that we, you know, if the butter's not here, that those would be addressed, that's-
They can't, by law, they can't-
Yeah, I know.
-have any more water.
If you were a butter, you would be probably asking that question.
Okay, so next meeting?
6:40 you said?
Thank you.
Assuming peer review comes back and all that. Great.
Thank you.
That being said, we are, we've completed our-
We've got nothing to do, yeah, it's kind of boring.
We like, we like, we'd like to do some work.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah, yeah. May I hear a motion to adjourn? So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Turn the, turn the switch off.